All right. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated by the agenda. We'll call to order and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, Michelle.
Mr. Klaus.
Here.
Mr. Schleicher.
Here.
Mr. Hubert.
Here.
Mrs. Summer.
Here.
And Mr. Hiltzman.
Here.
Okay. Tressky, I don't see Tressy or Sherry. And I don't see Joni. Amy, you have anything for us?
Yes. As part of tonight's agenda, I have submitted two requests. In addition to my report, I'm asking for the approval to submit the fiscal year 2526 Head Start grant. And my second request is to ask for an approval when I submit the grant for a 10% reduction in the non-federal match. To just expand on that a little bit, it's time, our grant is due September 1st, so I'll be submitting that. Within that grant, about 84% will be dedicated to personnel infringement, and the rest will be dedicated to services, supplies, overhead costs, things like that. That's a little bit more higher than typical. Like usually, we stay right around 80%, but with the need for additional personnel and benefit costs and things like that, we've upped that a little bit. The non-federal match waiver, I've asked for this for the last couple of years and stayed right around 5%, but with increased costs and lower donations and fewer volunteers, our ability to collect that much, it would be about $500,000 for us to collect, meaning the requirement, the 20% match. We're just not going to be able to do that. Like, I'm watching this year really closely, and so I'm going to ask for a 10% waiver for this next year so we can stay in alignment. And I'll submit that along with the application.
Any questions? Any questions for Amy?
So that waiver says that we have to cover, that we have to have a 10% match here locally and the other 90% that comes from the federal government?
No. So it would just be a gap.
Okay.
So our grant right now is $2.2 million. So we have to collect a little over $500,000 in a local match. That, since the pandemic hit, that has just shifted, right? Like, in dollars and services, if they originated with the federal government, like if any of their funding came from the federal government, I can't count that. So it all has to be state and local funds. And then, you know, you rely on your volunteers and things like that. 85% of our families are working, so that decreases your parent base for your volunteers as well. So just things are getting tighter and tighter for us. And this is a, we are allowed to ask for this waiver, so I'm asking for it.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Amy.
Okay. Thanks, Amy. All right. Phil, any updates with the facilities?
Start with the elementary building. They've been working on pouring concrete slabs and curbs. They've established pretty much the sub base for the asphalt. Expecting to be pouring that in the next week or so. They were in there compacting all the gravel right now, backfilling with topsoil into the areas in the islands within the parking lot. So you can start, have a really good visual right now of what the final site's going to look like over there with that. So they've also come through and they've, we had some doors that needed to be replaced inside, some existing doors that had been damp, that were damaged and were poor enough condition, so that had all been approved earlier. And they finally got around to getting those doors in, so they look really nice. They match. And kind of needed upgrades there on the interior of the building. So I think there's, I want to say like around 30 doors that they've gone through and changed kind of from the old CIS portion of the building. So that work's been completed. Trying to think, we talked about asphalt. So sidewalks, if you go by over on Portland Street, that's all rearranged now. What was parking on Portland Street is now, is now grass there, and then they moved the sidewalks. All the light poles are up. The bases are out, and then the light poles will soon follow. So that's progressing nicely. I think it's working out really well over there. The high school building, was there today. They've moved the crane, so they've set the last of the big steel beams coming across the cafeteria, across the main competition gym. So they worked their way north on there. Now they're coming around to the, kind of the northeast side. Will be setting some steel over the auxiliary gym. So there's still some steel to go there. So roof deck wise, they'll be ready to start decking everything, that high structure. They've already started down over the stage area, working their way north. So they should be finishing up with the decking on there and progressing right onto roofing and get all that weather tight in, top down. Third floor, they started at the top. They kind of worked themselves from the inside of a building out, from the top down and out. So the third floor, all the steel studs have been put in. They've got all the rough in, their electricals and plumbing, a lot of hangers so they can start doing all their overhead sprinklers and duct work, moving along well with that. Coming down to the second floor, they've started laying some track as to where their walls are going to be laid out, and then working on the studs for that area as well. Finishing up on concrete flatwork, I think the last section is, again, the cafeteria space and the auxiliary gym, you had to do the floors, and then should be done with the flatwork on the, on the main structure there. They've started doing block. If you've driven by the face of the building, there's four different types of block you're going to see. There's two colors, one rough and one smooth. So there's a split face and then a smooth face block. And there's a darker gray and then a lighter sand color. So if you go by and see that. And then there will be, the entry will be outlined in that green and the Solyne green steel. Steel panel on that. So come on with my stuff as well.
Somewhere I saw drone pictures of the elementary school, and that really gave me an idea of how that's laid out. Looking at it from the road, it's hard to see, but the pie shape in front and that sort of thing, that really helped with being able to see it.
We're working on some color-coded routes that are more user-friendly for parents.
How are we going to use the colors on the pavement, you mean, or?
Kind of the routes, like a double dash line as you go in. One, make that green, and another one could be granite, just so they know there's two distinct entrances with two distinct exits.
So for some volunteers to simulate dropping off, dropping off and picking up, so maybe we want to show that be a star in Corey's video.
I worry that it's only going to be done a day before.
So it's going to be all done by school, and it's going to be just perfect, right?
Perfect, yeah.
And then, little finishers, obviously these landscape to finish. Forgot to mention, you did the tree then last week.
Yeah, it's a vacation day, so, yeah.
When's the first day of school?
19th, 13th, August 13th.
Really? Oh, so that's right around the corner. It is time to lay asphalt.
Did I say door frames and window frames to high school?
Yeah, they're, they're sitting there, yeah. Every floor's got door frames stacked up. Gym's full of furniture as well. Yep.
Any other questions for Phil? Thanks, Phil.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Michelle, I'm going to turn over to the discussion to you.
Okay, thank you. So this evening, as you know, we need to make the decision, or the board needs to make the decision, as to what type of levy we want to run this fall, November, for our emergency levy that is going to expire. So, and back in May, I had a discussion with the board, and I think there were only three members. I'm not sure. I don't recall who was here and who was not. You were here, John? So anyhow, I just kind of revisited what I discussed back in May and kind of updated information from what's happened with the state budget and was going to kind of talk through that a little bit. So before we, the board goes into discussion of what type of levy they would like to run this fall. So first off, as you know, the state budget, the one thing is, the state budget has, since went through the process, and the governor signed it on June 13. When he did that, he actually vetoed 67 items with several of those benefiting schools. So most recently, the House and had set a date, which is today, to reconvene and consider overriding three of the line item vetoes that the governor vetoed. So they did meet today, and actually, one of the items is number, item 55, no, sorry, 66, right? 66, yeah. But what they did was, they did vote to override his veto of a vote of, the vote ended up being, I think 6128, that's going to pop in our front there. So anyhow, and then, so what'll happen next with that item, well, it will go to the Senate, and the Senate needs 20 votes to override that. So, and with that, there are two, the other two items, number 55 and 65, that are still out there. And so what, this afternoon, the memo that we got was, actually, they had till the end of December to override those vetoed items. So, still could happen. So that's where we're at with the three, with the budget, and again, the three items that were, the House was proposing to override. Next is the, what I have is the fair school funding formula. So what happened with that in the budget is basically, they, the fair school funding formula was to be implemented over six years, three bienniums. They're going to continue to implement it, but what they're not doing is updating the cost, the base cost in that formula. So basically, that will reduce our funding. So what you can see in the chart, estimated impact, so you can see, the last meeting I just had, the governor's budget and then the House's version. So now I've added the Senate's version and the conference committee. So what's actually is gone into law is the conference committee version. So you can see, in FY26, this current fiscal year, the new fiscal year that we're in, we'll lose $651,630 in funding. Of course, you know, that changes this, things that impacted ours, you know, enrollment and things like that. So it can fluctuate a little bit. That's estimates. And then the next fiscal year, we'll lose an additional $370,679. So the total impact of the biennium is actually $1.6 million loss in state funding. Does anybody have any questions on that? So that shows the different versions that went through the process.
That's if the Senate passes?
No, this is already, this is one, was one of them that is, is in the budget that the governor put into law.
Would you attach my thesis?
It's not. It's, I just shared it with the board, and so it's, yeah. I mean, I have a couple where I need to share them. I only have a couple copies.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. The next, Senate Bill 66, this is where they proposed the bill amendments, the revised code, code to include emergency levies, substitute levies, in all inside millage and school district income taxes calculation of the 20-mill floor. Now, what they did do here, and I didn't, I should have taken it out, is they did strike out the income tax. That's not, that's not into the mix anymore. So, but that is still in play. That's one of the items, it's actually item 65, that the House wants to consider overriding the veto, because the governor vetoed that. So that could still potentially happen. And so then, the chart shows you how much revenue we would lose with that, that that would end up, and be overridden by the House and Senate.
But the chart has the one that was overridden by the House, and it was passed and it was passed by the Senate, right? This is Senate Bill 66?
What, what passed today is, is 66, which is the elimination of running levies, the emergency and substitute levies. So the 20-mill floor calculation, and then the other one, item 55, which is where this, that would allow the county budget commission to reduce voter-approved school district taxes under certain circumstances. Those two are still up in the air. So then, the next item I listed was challenges to the five-year forecast. So even, this still applies, because obviously, things are still up in the air. I mean, we still have two items that are, well, three, actually, because the Senate hasn't approved the item that the House overwrote today. So there's a lot of, still a lot of unknowns. So Solyne has two major sources of revenue, which all schools do basically, state revenue, which is 42.4%, and then local is 57.6%. You can see, under the local, what the, what that is made up of, it's property tax, which is the largest chunk, from what you can see there. Both the emergency and the property tax is, you know, $16 million. And then you have income tax, which is around $5 million. So the future funding concerns, again, are that, you know, two primary revenue sources are unknown because of the state budget. And then, I list there, the emergency levy funds, 14.5% of the 2025 forecast expenditure and 13.2% of the revenue, which is set to expire this tax year of 2025. So obviously, it's a very critical piece of our revenue that we've, we've got to have. In my, that's my opinion.
Yeah. So we lose the 1.6, $1,673,939. We're going to lose that. That's, as the law is currently written.
Correct.
And, and if the Senate approves, overrides the governor's veto, then what do we lose?
Well, what happens there is, we just, okay, so what that does, Mark, is we have one shot, which is November, to pass the emergency levy or a substitute levy, whichever we determine we want to go, whichever, whichever way, sorry, we go. Because what that does is that, in January 1, is supposed to go into effect, that you wouldn't be able to run or replace or renew any emergency or substitute levies. So what you would have to do is either run a new operating levy, or possibly, you know, you always have the option.
Okay, so, yeah. So 66 passes the House. It just limits the types of levies that we can, we could, we could run. It doesn't really take any more money from us. It just eliminates those types of levies.
Correct. Because if we, if we run whichever, again, emergency or substitute levy in November and it passes, you know, whether it's a five-year or 10-year, that's what's all these decisions that have to be made.
Right.
We're good for that period of time, right?
Right.
And then at the end of that, you will not be able to renew whichever, if it's an emergency or substitute levy.
Okay. And so then, 55 and 65 are the ones that would impact us financially?
65 and 66, well, 55 is, that just gives the budget commission, the county commissioners, the ability to reduce taxes, voter-approved taxes, which is silly, in my opinion, because the voters approve those taxes.
Right.
Right? So that's basically what 55 does. 65 is the 24, the 20-
That's the floor issue.
-mill floor calculation, correct. Where they're going to add in the substitute and emergency levies into that calculation.
Right. So that would, yeah. If I remember, that costs us, that costs like one and a half percent or something like that.
Well, and fun here, because that's, under the Senate Bill, that was Senate Bill 66, so that's on the second page of the bill. It shows you the first year we'd lose $691,000 in FY27, because that doesn't take effect until tax year 2026. So we're in tax year 2025 right now.
Right.
Get to keep the tax year and the fiscal years, they're different.
So it would be that 1.6 million plus the 700,000. So we'd lose-
Right.
-2.4 approximately.
If they, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I know, it's, it's very confusing.
When I was reading that myself, I thought, I don't think as taxpayers, I'm almost better off if we have the substitute levy. Does that, that keep it at a $7 amount?
Emergency levy is a fixed sum. So it's a fixed amount, 4.9 million is ours.
Right.
Right. So the substitute starts out, kind of as a fixed dollar amount the first year, in my understanding, and then they kind of convert it to millage the second year and on. So it's no-
As it adds in the new construction.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Which is a benefit.
Right. So the substitute, well, you know what, we'll get into that, Julie, because that's, that's the next thing.
Okay.
You're going right into it. So, not saying my sign, so they're just acting up tonight. So the first levy option is emergency levy, which is a renewal. It would be a renewal for us. I'm sorry. So the resolution, one thing found out from legal, is the resolution would have, would require three votes to pass it. The pros of it is, it would be a renewal. So we have, you know, that's a lot of times important when you're running a levy, because you can say it's a renewal, because it is a renewal, versus a new levy. Most community members do not like to hear that word of new taxes, which I don't either. Then two, you can change the length of it up from, we currently are five years, so we could change it to a 10-year levy. One and two.
Anything in between?
Yes. Up to, including 10. Sorry, John.
So if you pass it for five, it stays at 5 million. And how, how many years ago did we pass this for what elementary school? Like, give me a guess.
Well, it would have been five years ago. Well, it would have been five years ago, four years ago, right?
Yeah, but I'm in-
2020? Right, I think in 2019, 2020.
But it always stayed at that dollar?
I know, I didn't bring that shit with me. Yes, 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 because it's a fixed dollar amount, that's the only levy that's a fixed dollar amount. And what they do is they back into the millage, they do come up with a, you know, they calculate, they back into the millage.
And if we, if we ran the emergency again, it does not raise anyone's taxes at all?
No.
Might even lower it by two pennies, because there's more people with new construction, because it's the same dollar.
It's the same dollar amount.
Right.
So because it can, as evaluation goes up, right, the millage goes down, so, yes. And I wish, I'm sorry, I would, I should have brought my tax rates-
No, you're fine, I just want-
So, because I could have told you how, you know, it's the rate, whether it's, it's went down from last year to this year.
I think it's important that people know that that does not change.
Right, that's a fixed dollar.
At a time.
The cons with that, though, is for the school district, is it is, it is a fixed dollar amount, and so you get no growth from it, right? And the other thing is, emergency is confusing, but there's many districts, I think, every district, maybe not being marked, I've been to, has had emergency levies. But it is, and honestly, the current state we're in with the state budget, with, you know, the House and the Senate are trying to do, it could be weird, it could eventually get into an emergency situation, but anyhow, and not just Solana, it's going to be across the state, there's going to be a lot of districts that are here soon, if all this goes through with the state and the Senate.
Well, in all reality, that, those are operating funds, it's not an emergency situation, but the emergency is just the vehicle by which we were allowed to pass the levy.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
So then the second option is a substitute levy, which they also call a replacement levy, because really what that does is it replaces the emergency levy. The one thing with that is the resolution does require four yes votes versus three yes votes. The pros with that, you will, or the district will receive revenue growth from new construction. So in tax year 2024, there was 3.7 million in new construction, which would bring in approximately $10,000 more in revenue. Actually, the county auditor was, when I talked to them earlier this week, was going to, I wanted them to do calculations, see, this was my calculation, just to see what it would be, but, and she said, well, I've never even calculated a substitute levy, so apparently there's nothing in the county, we would be first. And then with a substitute levy, the other positive with that is it can be up to 10 years, or it could be continuous. So that's basically the difference between a substitute and emergency. The substitute, you get growth from new construction, and you can have a continuous substitute levy.
But again, on that one, it doesn't raise the taxes that people are paying, except that people who have new construction will then be paying.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Yep, exactly. And then number three is, you know, you let the emergency levy expire and you run a new operating levy. So the pros with that is you can run it as a continuous levy, and then the cons, I put at this time, that new school district levies are not passing throughout the state, I just don't believe that one would pass. And that's pretty much, we, Brooke and I got that from, in May, the pass rate was not very compared to what has happened trend-wise across the state, that's a statewide comment. So the next steps is to pass a resolution in necessity tonight, which I will submit to the county auditors by July 25, which I will actually deliver to them in the morning, I've already talked to them and they are aware of that, because they have up to 10 days to certify that. So they give me a certificate, and then we have to have another meeting, and that meeting then is, call it, we have to pass a resolution in necessity, or no, I'm sorry, that says necessity, oh, no, I guess it does. It does say.
Yeah.
Resolution to proceed. So, and that has to be at the Board of Elections office by 4:00 PM on August 6. And then of course, the last bullet I have there is to revive a levy campaign committee. And I just put a couple key terms, just so if anybody doesn't understand what the 20 mil floor is, or guarantee, or funding, how's school 920? So that's basically all the information I have on levy.
So what we would do is- For the board to have some dialogue and to, to set the direction on which levy and what is the duration?
When is the levy up that we just passed two years ago, two years ago, November?
Three years.
The income tax levy, John?
Is that what, yeah, that's what it was, wasn't it?
It was the income tax levy.
Yeah, it was the same election when we were elected.
Yeah, I think it was a five-year.
Yeah.
Well, that, that, that has created the flip-flop, because every five years, we vote for an income tax levy, and every five years, we vote for an emergency levy, and they offset each other, so every two to three years, the voters are getting, we want more money.
Yeah, that's-
They want, we want them to vote for-
That's why I was asking, so I could see when this is going to happen.
Yeah, well, two years after this one, probably, we'll, we'd do that one again.
I think it's important to not say we want more money, we want the same money-
Right.
Which you need to ask for again, ask for again.
We're just re, yes, correct, you know, we're renewing that.
Exactly, it's a minimal, yeah. Same amount of money, no matter.
And if we do this, and we get the same amount of money, we're still going to lose that 1.6 million dollars.
All right.
Right? And so we're going to have to-
At the minimum.
I, I really honestly do not have a good feeling about probably what the House and Senate are doing, because I think they're going to, I, my opinion is today, they knew they were going to be able to override, or get the votes to override that item.
Yeah.
I think they're going to be working off to the side, and they will get the votes to pass the other two items, that's my opinion. And then, you know, so they have, they have six months to sit there and work on that, you know, basically.
Yeah, so how does that happen then? Does it go retroactively, impact us?
I don't know.
I mean, I, I-
I don't know if it's retroactive, retroactive, so.
Because that would be really nice, to go six down the road, six months down the road, and then send us the bill.
Right. Well, and that's why, one, why we have one shot that could, no, I'm getting mixed up on which one passed, because those are the items in my mind. But, so we have, we do have one shot to pass either an emergency or substitute levy in November, and that will be, unless something changed, but mine, all through the budget process, the, the new law would go into effect January 1 of next year. So unless something, with them not, you know, if they don't actually get it through the Senate by December, or, or they do by December 31, I assume it goes into law January 1. I don't know if that changes, you know, with this, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Because through the budget process, emergency, doing away with emergency substitute levies was going to be effective January 1, 2026. With this six-month period of time, that they're working to get that overridden, does that move that January 1 date? I don't know.
So if that, yeah, so if that passed, let's, just for sake of conversation, whether we pass it, we vote to do an emergency or a substitute, we, it'd be a one-time deal, we can do it this time, and next time we'll get to change it then, correct? Then it would have to become an operating levy, if they override that line item veto.
They override it, yes.
Right, yep, if it clears the Senate.
It's like playing chess.
It's done.
Which I also think has to worry for the public, because it's not a set dollar amount, that, I mean, millage-wise.
Right. It just puts more, it puts even more burden, if all of those three combined, on local communities, that's what it does. In order not to completely decimate and devastate districts, that's what it does. So what are your thoughts on which direction for levy and then duration?
I lean toward, I'm sorry, go ahead, Carl. Or whoever.
You'll hear me, I say somewhere.
I'm good with you, go ahead.
I'm good with, I'm, I'm leaning towards saying with the emergency levy, and calling it, because then we can use the verbiage renewal, otherwise we'd have to say substitute, we can't use the verbiage renewal.
Right.
But I would probably go with 10-year, get off that crazy cycle we're on, whereas every two years, we're-
Right, because that's, I mean, there are members-
The 10-year?
10-year. You know, community members that have an issue with that.
I, I agree with the emergency because of the terminology. And it is getting to be, you know, if we say, somewhere in this campaign, that we say, hey, we're losing 1.6, and it's going to be kind of an emergency if we don't get this passed, not kind of, it's going to be an emergency if we don't get this passed. And as far as the duration, I never would have gone with continuous, but that's under substitute anyway, because I think that scares voters away. Cold water proved that not too long ago. I don't know, I'd like to look at the flip-flop and see where they fall, longer is better, but I don't want to scare voters away either.
Well, it's better than continuous, too.
Yes, I, continuous I would not vote for, because that's, that's just too scary. So I'd say eight or 10, emergency, eight or 10, if we can figure out what year this one, this income tax was up, how they would fall.
Because eight would put it on the same end date of the other five-year one, right, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, it's every five years, but it's-
I think it may-
Yeah, since it's not, yeah, it's going to, at some point in time, they would sync up, but, you know, if, even if we could just get to the point where we're only asking for, have to go through a levy process every five years, that gives the public a chance to express their frustration, or, or their dissatisfaction, but yet, not asking every two to three years to renew something.
I think the other thing that we forget about is it's cost, every time we have a levy, it costs the district.
It does.
And that's another problem.
Well, yeah, well, caught, the, the, yeah, the levy committee, it costs them money, you have to raise money to do it.
Right.
Yeah, the district can't pay for it by law.
Well, we get charged by the-
Oh, we get charged by the, for the, by the Board of Elections.
To run, right, to run an election.
Even if it's general, even if it's a general election in November, we have to pay?
Basically, everyone's on the ballot, depends.
Has to pay something.
You got to pay more when it's a special election.
Right. But if it doesn't pass, it's not like we can't keep putting it on the ballot, and that's what it imposes more, it's just very, it's a catch-22. I would honestly say substitute, my reasoning is, is that the new construction money that that brings in, but I'm with emergency, because I do think in this situation, that's what it does.
And Julie, I would agree with you on that, but, you know, if the Senate does what we think they're going to do, and only having one shot, I just think everybody knows what they're getting paid.
Yeah.
Well, if, if we did the substitute, I'm just asking the question, you're allowed, are you allowed to use that replacement word in the, in the language?
I mean, you would, you would, I mean, it's part of it, it's, it's replacing, the substitute levy replaces, but as far as how the ballot language reads-
I bet not.
I don't know that that-
I don't have a great notion of what it is now, for some reason, I have a feeling.
Just the way the resolution reads is, an emergency levy, a new tax levy, generating for $9,313 per year for the purpose of a regular operating deficit of the school district, and then it has apprentices at 2020, there you go, Julie, emergency levy, was approved by the electors of Solana City School District, whatever it been, the last time it was ran, on November 3, 2020, which the 2020 emergency levy was first placed on the 2021 tax list and the duplicate proof was collection 2022, and will be in the final year of collection in calendar year 2026. Whereas the Board of Election desires to substitute the 2020 emergency levy for substitute tax levy pursuant to Section 5705.199 of the Reprimented and Substituted Code. That amount of revenue which may be raised in this school district by all taxes levied which this school district is authorized to impose when combined with all revenues to be received from the state of Ohio and the federal government will be insufficient to provide the necessary requirements of the school district. So it, the substitute is really substituting-
Right.
The emergency levy, so you still, in this resolution, see the emergency, basically, right, throughout, so.
Does a substitute levy, levy survive the legislation? It doesn't either, so at some point in time, we would have to change it to an operating levy, most likely.
Exactly, so, exactly.
So the substitute, or, so that doesn't bias anything?
No, no.
The only thing it bothers you is that new construction money gets put into it-
Yeah.
Where you're, if you're asking for 4.9 million, not, $4.9 million, that's still all you're going to get either way.
Right.
But it evens it out.
You're right, Julie, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of that-
The substitute would grow.
The levy goes away, the, if, currently, the substitute emergency levy for, with what they did today, goes away.
So my reason for asking how many times, I think it's been at least 10 years, 15 years, anybody old enough to remember one, but I feel like I do remember it, that's why I feel like it's probably in the last 20 years. But it's always been for 4.9 million dollars.
Yes.
And it's never raised, and I think that's so important for people to understand, that if we put that back on, we're not asking for a raise, we haven't had a raise in that in, I'm going to say 20 years, I don't know the real answer to that, but it hasn't been raised, it doesn't get raised when our taxes go up, that is the same dollar amount, it is an operating amount, and, yeah.
Because what they do, again, is they either low, or lower, or, you know, lower the millage as evaluations go up, to collect the same amount of money.
So in other words, your taxes might go down a little bit, a tiny little bit, a dollar, who knows?
It's valuation.
I would have no idea.
But in a substitute, that won't happen, correct? A substitute is based off of millage.
Right, right.
Yeah, so the school district could collect more, correct?
Well, you just collect, no, because, well, because you collect just from the, like Julie said, the new construction.
You still collect the same dollar.
It basically works the same, except for new construction.
So if, so whatever, the 4.9 million dollars cost me whatever, for sake of conversation, 10 mils, and I know it's not that much, then mine's not going to change, but if somebody builds a new building or whatever in town, they would then also start contributing towards school, so we could potentially, over a 10-year period, it's somewhere between $100, $150,000 additional revenue.
Right, if you took your $10,000, like, estimate, Mark.
Right.
And then, right, for 10 years, like-
And, and if not, especially if we're thinking 10 years, because if I'm not mistaken, if we do an emergency, all that new construction in 10 years doesn't give us good money.
Yeah.
In that, I mean, because none of that new construction, okay?
4.9 million.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But for, for you and I, anybody who's not done new construction, either way, ours does not change a dime-
Correct.
Going up at all, in that amount of time, either way.
Well, at a minimum, I, I think it might be wise for us to consider setting this emergency levy at whatever time, so that when the income tax comes back up, then this thing hits five years later, and that we, at a minimum, we get on a five-year rolling cycle versus a two-year, three-year, two-year, three-year, two-year, three-year, because that just gets to be-
A lot.
Well, it's tiresome, it's a lot of effort, takes a lot of effort on, from a levy committee perspective, doing it every five years is one thing, but every two or three years is, can be.
Are you saying combine both levies?
No, I'm saying, our income tax levy is going to renew in four years from now, right?
Yeah, we have, I believe that one, if I remember, on the, she was 2028?
Yeah. So if you made this nine years, it would then be every five years?
Yeah, yeah, all I think is, it, it would be nice if you didn't have this exercise, but every five years versus every two years.
I agree.
Yeah, they're very close in cycle, so anything we can do to elongate that, and I mean, I just-
Just to put, I mean, to make, not make it-
Otherwise, it's, it's, I mean, in a sense, like voter fatigue.
Yes.
Absolutely, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, Mark, which, which direction are you leaning?
I, I like the substitute, but I can, I'm not opposed to the emergency levy, that's fine.
So it sounds like the consensus, for the majority, is given our circumstances, right? Emergency levy renewal is probably what's best for right now.
That's the way I feel.
And so the next step is, what is the duration, knowing that it can be up to 10 years?
Actually, we have resolutions for five.
Five and 10, so if we needed, if you wanted to do something else, then we would have to.
So the income tax was passed last year?
Yeah.
In '24?
She said it was off something in '28, I thought.
I, I thought that that's what, when we last looked, it would be ready to run it in '28, now I don't know if that means it's gonna expire.
'23, yeah, November '23.
And that texture does when we have to be ready to renew it.
And I think, is that Mark, '23 will be passed?
November '23. November '23.
Okay, that's when they were elected, okay, so November '23, so it's, okay, so in '28, it's coming back.
I believe it's like, it's like every two, it feels like every two years, '26, '28, and it's current.
Yeah, and if we do it for five years, in 2010, or 2030, gosh, 2030, we'll be doing it again, two years right after it, so we're, we'd stay in that five-year cycle.
Yeah.
Unless we extend this a little bit.
Correct.
And then by that time, the law might have changed, and we might have to change it anyway.
Yeah, we may be planning for a moving target here, that's what you gotta do.
Right.
Maybe for simplicity purposes, we just run another five-year like we've been doing, and the public knows what they're getting, they know what they're going to pay, and then we can see what, you know, the Senate actually does push through and see what legislation is, instead of guessing, I mean, we've been trying to do that now for a month and a half, and, you know, unfortunately, the folks in Columbus keep changing, keep moving the goalpost on us, and so.
One consideration, I agree, one consideration to that, for the board to consider though, is if you continue with a five-year, we, we don't think that the Senate is going to, to vote it down, right? I don't know that they would, that they would take these steps and, and separate the items, move from, from three to one, if they actually believe the Senate was gonna vote it down. I mean, let's be realistic, they probably have, they know who they have votes, right? So I think we need to operate under those circumstances, given that, then what we're looking at is five years from now, now, now we, we don't have any renewals, now it has to be new levy, right? And, and so if you look at that in context to, with what we anticipate, right, the next levy coming up for potential renewal in 2028, now we're.
Well, that's an income tax levy.
Right.
So that's not changing according to this law.
Right, though we don't have any guarantee it's going to pass.
Right.
So now we've just potentially lost whatever revenue, then you, then we would be looking at potentially, you know, running a new levy anyway, because we don't have enough to close that gap, because we just lost that much, because we can't, we can't run it again, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Just a consideration, obviously, it's the board's decision, and we'll.
Yeah. Well, and then if this 20 mil floor thing comes back, that lose, that lost us, loses us money also.
700,000 in the first year, which is 2027.
Yeah, okay, that's this, this is the, this is the floor one, 66.
Yeah.
The floor is 65.
I'm sorry. Senate bill 66, Senate bill 66 is the floor.
I'm sorry, I thought that was 65, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm saying, the floor, when it went through the process, was Senate bill 66, sorry, and item 65, depends on what budget we're talking about.
There's only been, you know, five iterations, yeah. So, yeah, so 65 goes, if it passes, then, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Because they're gonna add the levy to the, you know, emergency or substitute, so it doesn't matter.
Which reduces state funding.
An emergency or substitute, correct?
It, it's painful now, but it's, I mean, if, if I think I'm understanding this, it's like they're trying to get to where you have an operating levy, and that's.
The state funds less and less.
The state fund, yeah, they're trying to combine it all, so it's not so confusing.
The state is gonna, they're reducing and reducing their portion of the funding and putting it onto the local taxpayers.
Right.
And then what's happening is by them, you know, eliminating emergency substitute levies, and.
Right.
They're going to force schools to keep going back to the ballot more and more.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, I mean, because now we've got an emergency level, you can have an income tax levy, you can have a substitute levy, you can have an operating levy, and it's confusing, because they're all doing the same thing, and so it sounds like they're trying to simplify that, but yet, in our current situation, it makes it complicated.
I don't know that they're trying to simplify it, I think they're just trying to reduce the state's burden.
Well, that, or maybe.
And they have billions of dollars in the rainy day fund.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
And.
I think what it does is it oversimplifies a complicated funding for schools, and so it depends on the narrative that's being spun.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that's the, you know, when I said, actually, when I was at the courthouse today, to the county treasurer, I said, what they really need to do is, instead of having all these reforms, they're calling it, is to fix the formula.
Yeah.
And nobody wants to do that, apparently, you know, it's just like this schools, state funding formula, nobody ever wants to tackle it, and I always say, ever since I've been in this business, if you ever look at the state funding formula, formulas that they've had over the years, I just feel like they make them so complex and complicated, because they don't want anybody to understand them.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Interesting theory.
Yeah. It is, well, it is, it is, it's like the UFCC projects, that math is, I've worked for years, and I still don't know that I understand it, and I've tried.
I think it's, yeah, purposely, they try to confuse us.
So, duration.
Yeah, that's, that's a really, that's a really difficult one, right there, I've been sitting here grinding and grinding.
Is everybody comfortable with the emergency?
Yeah.
Yes. I think everybody's okay with the emergency.
Appears to be, yeah.
But I even sit and think about what I just told you I saw at the courthouse today, there was a table up there, and a couple up there, that with the big sign saying no property tax, and had a petition, so just think if somebody moves ahead with that, at least, I would think if we have this emergency levy in play for 10 years.
Yeah.
That's some stability.
Yeah, but in 10 years, that, the 4.9 million dollars in 10 years is probably not gonna be enough.
Right, I know.
And so, so if you kick that can down four years down the road, then 10 years from now, all of a sudden, you're gonna need my emergency levy slash operating levy, or whatever it's called at that moment, and something else on top of it.
I mean, really, the district should be very proud that we've, we haven't ran any additional, you know, we've been doing, we've been fiscally responsible and living off of this emergency levy, that is a fixed sum levy, it has a certain amount, it doesn't grow, so, and the salary and benefits is 82% of our budget, those grow.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody that is, has health insurance knows, usually it's a double-digit increase every year in health insurance costs, and then you have, you know, you can't expect people to work with no increases, right? So salaries grow, I'm just saying to, you know, to.
Well, this is just at the state level, because another fact that exists is we are, we are losing, I mean, approximately, I mean, it's over 100,000 dollars in federal funding, like, that's, it's gone, as of this year, it's gone, and so that went to pay for additional supplies, that, it helps relieve a general fund.
Mm-hmm.
If you use it strategically, right, that's what that money helps. So, you know, it's for, for learning opportunities for our staff, it's for expanding programs for our students, for, you know, the whole child, for wellbeing, for enrichment activities, for STEM in the arts, like, that, that's where, that, that money, and for our English learners, we've lost that money. And so if we want to try to maintain and continue programming, and we want to try to maintain, you know, our learning for our adults, which is important in an ever-changing environment, that, that's, that's not even factored anywhere into this, but we have to try to see what we can do, and yes, we still have to live within our means, but we also need to create those opportunities and continue that programming, and we have to grow programming. So, you know, it all, it all comes into play as well. So these two resolutions as drawn up, one is for five and one is for 10, if the board is not comfortable with, you know, with, with going the 10 route, and wants to, you know, eight or nine, or whatever that number is, then we can make that adjustment, yet we just need to, we just need to know that.
It almost sounds like the five-year is, it's, it's a renewal, it kind of keeps us on our current path, but we know we're gonna have to change, but we don't know what we have to change to, because the Senate hasn't told us yet, Columbus hasn't told us yet, and making it too long fixes us at 4.9, to the point where then we would have to be asking for a new levy. And so it sounds like they're gonna force us to go to a operating levy of some sort in some timeframe, so in five years, we just have to deal with it then. That's what I think I heard.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's, it feels like I'm kicking, we're kicking the can down the road a little bit, but.
Somebody kicked it for us.
Yes, yes, that's what's happening.
My vote is stick with the five-year emergency, that's just mine, you know, if people have different opinions, that's fine.
I wanted to go lo, longer, but I've been sitting here thinking it's gonna scare voters to put a longer levy on there, and it might get us a few no votes that we might have gotten if we went with a five, five-year, so I, I think I agree, I'd rather go longer.
I see what you're saying, I mean, I'm, I'm one who always votes for the school levies, especially renewals, because they don't, and the one thing I've heard when I went around and got my petition signed was no new taxes, no new taxes, I've been hearing that from everybody.
Sure.
This isn't a new tax, and maybe they would see security in knowing there's no new tax coming with that 10 years, I don't know, so I mean, I, I think a 10-year is the way to go on that, but.
I don't, I don't disagree with the extending it, but I don't, I don't like it that it makes it a fixed amount of money for 10 years, when we don't know what five years is, on our end, it's a fixed number for us, and in five years from now, three years from now, we don't know what the state's gonna do to us. How often do they redo their budget?
Every two years.
It seems like, honestly, Groundhog Day, I think I've felt this before.
It's felt like, take it as two years.
Yeah, and it's, so it just, that's the, that's the scary part to me, is it's a fixed amount of money when we don't want, don't know what the future brings.
Yeah.
And so you would lean toward?
Five.
Okay.
Julie? It's tough.
It's tough.
It's a tough call.
If, I, I would vote for the emergency five, five, we do it, because I, I'm like Mark, I feel like we're fixing ourselves there, but we have to pass this, and so, we gotta do what we gotta do.
Okay.
Just for public knowledge, how many years is the school building levy, that, the building project levy?
Oh, my God, it's 38.
30 years?
38.
38?
Yes.
And we're, what, 10 years in at most, probably?
No, insulitis?
Yeah.
Oh, it's two years.
Into the levy paying for the levy?
Yes.
Yeah.
It just passed in '21.
Yeah, why do I feel like I really, maybe because we were talking about how long it'll take to be the end, yeah, sorry about that.
Yes.
Okay.
No, we just passed it in '21.
So it's a long one.
And it passed.
Okay.
So it's a long way to wait, yeah.
So when we look at how long it's taken for the, yeah, well, it could be longer than 20 years.
I'm okay with the five, I would like, I would like to go longer, but it scares me that we'd get some no votes because of a, a long one. I, I agree, Carl, I think it'd be good, but.
The one thing I just want to say, because, no matter what, the way it's looking, is no matter what, you're gonna have to run a new something eventually, whether, because.
They're changing, they're changing it, aren't they?
They're gonna eliminate emergency and substitute levies.
Right.
So my thought is, you could go 10, if you think you want to do that, and if you have to, you can always run an additional if it's needed, you know, seven years down the road.
Yeah.
Or, the other thing, I think I threw that out there, was increase income tax. Say we ran the 10 years, and I'm sorry, throw another thing, other options out there, right?
That's okay.
But you could run the emergency as a renewal for 10 years, and then again, if for some reason down the road, you can always, you could run the income tax, and if I remember right legally, you can run the income tax anytime.
Can you have some time?
You don't have to wait till it is ready to expire.
Can you have some time, like, when that income levy, income will do, can you run that and have a verbiage in there to override the other levy?
Override, like the original income tax?
Yeah, the other, the one we're getting ready for you now, this one.
Oh, I don't know.
So would they combine?
I have a legal question.
I don't know, there was some, there's some, there were, you couldn't run combined anymore, that's another thing you could not, they're doing away with, you can't do a combined levy.
So you can't have two bonds, or two, two levies on the same?
Well, they call it a combined, I think, like, and I'm not sure, I've never, I've never balked on one, Mark, but like, if you're running a half a percent income tax along with.
Right.
5 million dollar emergency as one levy, right?
So one vote, vote for both, kind of thing.
I'm not saying do that, I'm just.
I know, you're saying to, to, do away with the emergency levy, like, let it expire early, right? Is that what you're saying, Carl?
No, I'm saying if that one's still going, say we're running an income tax levy, say we run an income tax levy, raise that, and say this board lays the current income tax levy and the emergency levy that is currently on the books, and that'll be taken off, could you do that?
I don't know.
I, I don't, I'm not sure. I've, I've not seen that.
I've heard that, yeah.
Doesn't mean it couldn't happen, just not seen it.
If, if the state changes this, so you can't have emergency or substitute anymore, our levies will be grandfathered until they run out?
Yes, yeah, yes, whatever's currently in law stays in law until they expire.
Okay.
That's why, kind of, my thought would be to do the 10-year.
Do it longer.
Emergency, but it's not mine.
And I'm okay with a five-year, I'm just thinking a 10-year would possibly pass, because people are saying, you know, new taxes.
If they'd understand that, yeah.
Right, that's the.
That's the thing.
No matter which route you go, there has to be, you know, there have to be, a campaign definitely done, and information given.
I mean, honestly, if you think about, your taxes aren't one up for five, or your taxes are, are one up for 10 years, 10 years seems like a better deal.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, in that, in that instance.
Yeah.
How we did it, Carl.
But our, our operating budget is 35 million dollars, approximately, and if wages grow every 2%, every two, every year, just 2%, that's 700,000 dollars a year, it's a million bucks a year, and it's gonna, and that million bucks is gonna turn into 1.2, it's gonna turn into 1.3, and 10 years down the road, that 1 million dollars is now gonna be 2 million dollars, and that 4.9 million dollar levy that we just passed for five years isn't gonna cut it, it ju, the math doesn't work.
The only, the only key to that, though, is that it, you know you have that.
Right, that's why I think it's something.
It's, it's, it brings some, some stability in a very tumultuous, unstable environment, that we know, it might still not be enough, but it's not zero.
And that's why I always, I think you have the option of.
Just something to consider.
Income tax, possibly, or even a new operating levy, you always have that option, those options there.
Right.
Then, then we would keep it at a status quo, and if you get to the point where you need it, which you know we will, you then ask, you know, it's like, okay, but here we are, and we can, I mean, you know, schools offer pretty much, or they run pretty much bare bones anyway.
Yeah, yeah. If, if you, if you pass it for 10 years, you will, in my opinion, be going back in five years for old money, in some way, shape, or form, either through income tax or an operating levy.
Now, when that income tax comes up in two years, three years, then you might have to increase it.
Yeah, because right now we're getting 1%?
Right. So with that, you know, so it's really, it's, it's really, it's called, you know, it's...
And again, if you're not comfortable, you know, you, you can do anything, just because these are the, the resolutions for, that are drawn up, right, five and 10, doesn't mean it, it has to be, you, you can, you can change that in there if you wanna look for, just to throw another option on the table.
Well, I really liked the nine, when you came up with nine, so it'd be every five years. But, well, they vote for it. Carl thinks they should, should, I, I kinda think they should, but I don't.
There's no guarantee on anything.
No, there isn't a guarantee that five will work either, but.
My vote's for a five.
Five.
I'm good with a five.
I'm okay with a five. Tough decision.
So just to clarify, um, the board has agreed to the resolution for the emergency renewal levy for the duration of five, to run on a five-year term, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so that is the resolution then, later on in the agenda, and that's what the resolution that you approved, that's what you'll be approving.
Okay, okay.
Sorry to be the bearer of the bad news.
No, we knew that was coming, Michelle.
Have to deliver all the bad news, but what's going on in state?
So Adam, before we move to the setting the agenda with, with some changes that are listed there, I'd like to, if the board will please add one more change, I believe it was to pull item number eight under section seven of the Treasurers Report.
Good.
And to remove that, and then knowing that we still need to take action, but just to have perhaps the next special meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
As well?
That just gives us a little.
No, we're gonna have another meeting for, so we can get it done before, you know, the August regular meeting. Okay. I just wanna make sure we have that, because I think it's been hanging out there for a minute. But to pull it from this agenda, I'd like to add that, please.
Okay.
So I'll move to set the agenda as amended?
One second.
Mark? Julie?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
Mr. Goldsman?
Aye.
Did we have anybody signed up to speak tonight?
Yep, there's someone on there.
Teresa?
Hi. How are you guys this evening?
Good evening.
I had a list of four questions, which you guys brought up so many things to talk about. But I think I'm gonna stick with my four and, and I'll pass the other one right now. The capital improvement fund, since I've heard what Michelle said about the governor vetoing, oh, not the governor, but the house vetoing, the, I'm referring to the carryovers. Okay, so.
The capital projects fund.
Right, so is, is that still in play, that we have that money in those, in that capital fund improvement?
Yes.
How long can it stay there?
10 years.
10 years?
Yes. If it's not used for.
Wasn't it true, we were going to do that anyway?
Yes.
Yeah, that was something we were going to do anyway. We talked, we talked about it for several months.
Yes, I remember.
Before the state went into that.
You just had not specified what you were going to use it for.
I apologize, Michelle.
No, you're fine. And that's what, that's requirement of that fund.
Okay.
So.
So that, so that's, you're, you're pretty much set in stone for the next 10 years to use that money as you specified.
Yes, okay, and you don't, the money has to go back to the general fund.
So if we got in a financial, if we got in the financial situation where we needed that money and we had not spent it on that, we could pull it back, is that's how I understand it. So it's not locked in there. But if we spend it on capital improvement, it's gotta be spent on those things.
Okay, now, you're just, you're just confusing me there. So let's say, like, like the levy doesn't pass.
Yes.
Okay, so you're, you just said, the way I heard it, was that if you needed that money, you could use it for anything you wanted.
We would have to have a board resolution to move it back into the general fund.
It would have to go back to the general fund, but you'd basically be playing, changing your plan, right? You would be saying that, okay, we're not gonna buy 10 buses, we're not gonna, what are the other items on that?
Well, it was free, so, true, or, right, the Tuck Point, the Fieldhouse, some other things. So, that we weren't gonna do those because we need, because if the, the emergency levy doesn't pass, that's $5 million a year that we lose in revenue, so we need to cover that. That would have to be passed by the board. By the board, okay, all right.
Move it back.
So technically, it is not set in stone.
That's right, I just wanted to clarify, when you said set in stone, that was pretty concrete.
All right, so as long as the board says it's okay to move it because of whatever reason you guys said.
And I, I think the only reason they would is if, if it was an emergency.
Correct, 100%.
I mean, committed to spending the money the way that it's.
Well, I, I wasn't, if you thought I was implying that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind as to how, how it all works.
Okay.
I was looking over the, the attachments, and I see where, not attachments, but the agenda, where you've asked for wireless communication allowance. Is that something new, or we've always done that?
We've always done that.
And so that allows these 18 people to, are they getting another cellphone? I mean, what are they?
No, they, no, we give them a stipend to $30 per month for using their own cellphones for businesses.
Another one, the golf cart donation by the, by the band parent. Do we know what that's gonna be used for? I mean, that sounds like a silly question coming from me, but.
I know it replaces the.
They currently have one.
They currently have one?
Yes, that's basically from my, Renee, you may know more about it.
They use, they use the golf cart during the parties, and then during all of their band practices, and they use it all the time. They just don't even realize that they have it.
Just to funnel people back and forth and.
And equipment.
And equipment.
Yeah.
Where you're gonna, does this go to away games?
I can't answer that, actually, pretty much.
Because I would doubt, I don't know.
Well, I can't imagine they would take.
I mean, that would be several trips of, with just a little golf cart, I mean, if you're hauling equipment, I mean, they just do big stuff, tubers.
They usually carry a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, once again, I, I didn't start coming to these meetings till August of last year, so if I'm asking questions that people normally get, then I, I do probably. The next big thing is the AC for the elementary school. What, what is the temperature set at for it to keep the AC on, that you, that's been kept on all summer long?
Cory, Michelle, could you?
It's probably gonna get it wrong, there's a window, okay? Maybe like 70 to 72, or 71 to 73, I probably have it wrong, okay? There's a 2-degree variable that a staff member in their room can lower that window by 2 degrees or raise it. My understanding is it goes into unoccupied mode, and we'll explain that.
The whole building is set through occupancy sensors, so when nobody's occupied in the building, it shuts down. Same thing with classrooms, it's just all of our lights, everything's automated, a lot of that stuff is getting dialed in right now. So one of the things, just recently, I know we contacted Smith Bond because we noticed, actually, we get, we know, Jeff Everman, our maintenance supervisor, will get a notification that something seems incorrect in the system, so they'll go back in, they'll take a look. So they are dialing in that air handling system throughout the summer, so.
So is, the system is set up for no occupancy?
Correct, yep. Yeah, lights go out, there are some, obviously some emergency lighting that stays on all night, that sort of stuff, but yeah, all of our.
So it's, so it's kept between, let's say, 73 degrees, it doesn't go
Yeah.
any higher than 73 degrees. I'm looking at the electricity cost here.
Sure.
And I know where it runs the room in my house, and I just have a window in it, so I can't even imagine a school of that size, how much it's going to cost to AC it when we aren't even in it.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, it's not air conditioned when it's unoccupied, the whole building is not when it's.
So you're.
Sorry, the air is conditioned, the temperature is, it goes up.
About 73, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's somewhere in there, yeah, yep.
It's the same in this building, at night.
Yeah.
It goes into a night mode.
Yeah.
I think it's like 74, I don't, it's, if you come in this building in the weekend, it's pretty toasty, because it's, it's shut down all weekend. And so, and the same in the evening, not assuming all buildings, so.
Pretty typical in the morning when I come in, it's pretty toasty.
So it's, it's, you're dialing it in right now because this is the first full year that you've used it. And I will, now that I haven't used it a whole lot of time, I hope, you'll be lucky if you get your renewal passed, because of the property taxes, farmers are hurting, and that's where your money comes from, guys. We are hurting, we don't have, the rain was a godsend, or else we'd be hurting more. We have no prices, the commodities are down, we don't know what other yields are gonna be. So combined with that, and I will disagree with Julie, the only time that it's not going to be you wanting more money is when it's not on the ballot, because that's the way people foresee it. You may, we may not be being taxed anymore, but it's still coming out of our pockets and your pockets, too. So you're gonna be hard pressed to get, to get it done with the environment that you have around here, with the farmers and the rain and lack of, and prices, so I'm, you know, the only thing I can tell you guys, it's, it's gonna be hard pressed, even though you're, I think you're gonna have to cut somewhere, you're gonna have to cut personnel or something to align it, to bring it into alignment, because 82% of salary infringements is a lot.
Well, we are a service-type organization, we're not manufacturing or some of the, you know, those types, so we are a service type, so, which is why salary benefits are, you know, the majority is just, we're a service-type organization, that's typical for those types of businesses, but, yeah, hopefully.
I'm just, I'm, I'm telling you as a taxpayer, it's gonna be hard.
Oh, I don't doubt it's hard.
We know that.
A lot of things that are hard right now, but, but also, we probably gonna have to visit, where can I know that? Mark just pointed out, we pointed out here, we're losing 1.6 million in state funding, we potentially losing another 700 million in 20-year floor calculation, I mean, we're getting hit hard.
Every levy has its challenges, and this is just another one that, you know, we have to get out there and we have to have conversations with the community. So, I mean, that's what it comes down to, every levy has its own challenges, and this is no different from anything that we passed in, or had in the past, so.
Thank you for your feedback, Teresa, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
All right, Michelle?
Okay, so the Treasurers Report, items to approve are the minutes for June 23rd and the June 30th meeting, and then the cash summary report for June, revenues of $5 million and expenditures of $1 million. And then number three is to approve the cash reconciliation report, that looks a little different this year, but that's, or this month, actually, but that's the report that I get out of the system, I do the year-end process. Anyways, with that being said, the balance as of June 30th was $70,611,588.34, and $44,398,971.78 was for the building project. Checks written for the month of June was $7,755,243.64. And then I need you to approve the FY '26 temporary appropriations as presented. And then number six is, this is an annual resolution, is to approve the transfer of $5,000 from the district athletic fund to the athletics baseball turf fund. And then number seven is to accept the following donations, the donation of 2,002 Pontiac Grand Vans, valued at $3,042 from Kenny Gurman, to TriStar Automotive Program, and donation of a GE Learjet CJ6 108A jet engine valued at $750 from the Armstrong Air and Space Museum for the automotive program as well. $1,010.10 donation from Grand Lake United Methodist Church for the Slyna High School Spirit Squad, Lab Rats New York City trip, $500 donation from Slyna Moose to the middle school FTC Robotics Club, $5,000 donation from the Eagles to the middle school FC FTC Robotics Club, $1,000 donation from Slyna Moose towards the purchase of pole vault ball, poles, pole vault, old, poles, or, or track and field program, and $1,500 donation from the Slyna BFW for Slyna Middle School Girls Wrestling Program. And then lastly, the donation from the band parent of a 2018 Easy Go Golf Cart to the Slyna High School Band valued at $5,000. Number nine is a resolution and necessity for emergency levy renewal for a period of five years by the board. And number 10 is to approve the Local Government Services, LGS, it's known as, to compile from information provided by the district, or myself, actually, that for the annual financial statements for Slyna City Schools as of June 30th, 2024, and to issue an accountant's report there on, in accordance with the statements on standard for accounting and review services issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. The cost is, the total cost is not as anticipated to exceed $1,400. And that is all I have for today.
Any questions from Michelle?
I move to accept.
All right.
Carl?
John Klaus?
Aye.
Adam Schleicher?
Yes.
Carl Cooper?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And Mark Goldsman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, for my part, the first is I'm asking the board to approve the presented personnel items in attachment one, and then to approve changing the factor for our special education secretary from 1.01 to 1.15 effective 2025, '26 contract year. We also have a need to approve Joelle King, SLP, for extended school year services at a rate of 30 an hour effective June 18th. And then Joshua Holzinger as a summer worker at a rate of $12 an hour effective July 7th, 2025. We also have some adult education instructors for TriStar, we'd like you to approve at a rate of $5 an hour, and they are listed below. And then to approve the agreement to the Treasurers' contract effective August 1st, 2025. If I may add on the attachment for personnel, I think you'll, you'll see what really stands out there are all of the academic supplemental positions. There were some positions that have been reduced ahead of next year. These positions are different than athletic insofar as they either directly or indirectly support students. And so these are the folks who are filling those positions, they have different classes, which means there are different amounts per negotiated agreement that we, we pay for those depending on their steps and the class. So it's not all the same amount for the individuals, and we also have we also have TriStar faculty on there as well. In addition, we have extended days, so we have a number of our staff members who work into the school year, and this is to benefit, or after extended, rather, and this is to benefit us. These are needs that we have to meet for students and for programs, and so that's what extended days compensate our people to do. So if you have any questions over that, letter A?
Brooke, do you see these academic supplementals changing when we go to one building?
That's a really good question. I think that in conversations with our middle school and high school administration, I think that we're gonna start looking at what does staffing look like. We are two years away, but it's gonna come really quickly, and we really need to start planning for that, so that's part of that conversation. So I, I don't know that I have a definitive answer for that at this point.
Okay, that's, that's fair, right, you know, after we looked at Opsy things, I just wondered if you were looking at some of that.
Are there any other questions for letter A?
Any questions? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Julie, a second?
I'll second.
John?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye. Aye.
And Mr. Huber, Hilsman?
Aye.
Underneath other business, there is one item, and that is to approve the thirty-dollar allowance for the staff listed below for the use of their personal cell phones. This was, this was one thing, Michelle, you correct me if I'm wrong. It used to be the district moved away from providing phones for staff, is that correct? So moved away from paying for that and moved to an allowance. And I think that this is, this is more commonplace in districts now than what it used to be. It used to be that they purchased phones.
And it is because of IRS regulations and so forth, so it's, it's a better option, actually.
I'll make a motion. All right, Mark, a second?
I'll second.
Julie?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman?
Aye.
And for the last section, which is letter C, this evening is to approve the Head Start report and the items that Amy alluded to earlier, which one includes the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Head Start grant, and also the ten percent non-federal match waiver. The other item on there is the change that she would like to change the language or add language to the administrative contracts to make sure the statement, this contract is contingent upon the availability of grant funds, is added into administrative contracts.
I'll make that motion. Mark, a second?
I'll second.
John?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
Mr. Hilsman?
Aye.
And if you would do the same for those three items, for another motion, please.
Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Julie, a second?
I'll second.
Carl?
Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Mr. Schleicher?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Aye.
Mrs. Summer?
Aye.
And Mr. Hilsman?
Aye.
There's no reason to go into executive session. This is something that I'd like to make a consistent part of the agenda in case during the midst of a meeting or at the beginning, the board decides that this is, we can just mark it instead of having to really revise an agenda and add all of this in there. So it's just seeming, it's not to indicate there's a reason.
Okay. Okay, guess we're to the end. Any, anything else before we adjourn? All right, can you get a motion?
So much.
Mark, and a second?
I'll do it.
Julie, all in, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.